I'd like to use the words, Mr. Mayor, today from the Cadet Prayer they pray at West Point upon graduation. It's a very moving prayer. "Well, God our Father, searcher of human hearts, help us to draw near to you in sincerity and truth. May our religion be filled with gladness and may our worship of you be very natural. Strengthen and increase our admiration for honest dealing and clean thinking and suffer not our hatred of hypocrisy and pretense ever to diminish. Encourage this council, encourage this mayor, encourage these leaders in their endeavor to live above the common level of life. Help them choose the harder right instead of the easier wrong and never to be content with a half-truth when the whole truth can be won. Endow them with courage that is born of loyalty to all those noble and worthy and scorn compromise with vice and injustice and know no fear when truth and right are in jeopardy. Guard them against flippancy and irreverence in the sacred things of life. Grant them new ties of friendship and new opportunities of serving, serving our community. Kindle in their hearts a fellowship with the cheerful countenance and soften their hearts with sympathy for those who sorrow and suffer. Help them to maintain the honor of this city untarnished and unsullied and to show forth in our lives the very ideals for which we live in doing our duty to you, to our country, to our city. All this we ask in the name of our Lord and Father Jesus Christ. Amen. God bless you."
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Fletcher?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mayor Winger?
Here.
Okay, preliminary matters. Are there any agenda additions, deletions, or adoptions?
Staff has no changes.
Move for approval.
Second.
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, proclamations. Jay, I believe you have a proclamation?
Okay, gonna put me first. I'm gonna read a proclamation for the holiday party that we've got going on in the rec department at Royal Palm Point. I believe we've got some people in the audience that would... It'd be nice if they could stand up here. I'm sure that we're gonna do pictures here afterwards. You'd come over the podium if you would. The proclamation reads, "Whereas holiday with your city department at Royal Palm Point will be held on Friday, December 6th, from 5:30 to 9:00 PM in the parking lot at and around the fountain at Royal Palm Point. And the holiday rec run, which is called 3296 GO, at the holiday rec party are concurrent events which proceeds... which the proceeds will benefit the Royal Palm Point Fountain, staying open on Sunday throughout the year. And entertainment will include live music by various local groups, a children's craft area to make tree decorations, a visit with Santa Puppeteer Papa Joe, a bounce house, a giant slide, and face painting. Additionally, attendees can watch the holiday boat parade from the dock, bid at a live auction for paintings, visit the holiday craft booths, the business and community booths as well, enjoy the many restaurants, and stop by one of the many food booths and the two beer gardens. And the holiday rec run, 3296 GO, is the first-ever city night run and begins at 6:00. The two-mile run begins at the entrance of Royal Palm Point and the runners will follow the beautiful route through the Vero Isles side streets and Young Park before returning to where the race begins. And the many generous sponsors and in-kind sponsors have helped make these events possible. Now therefore, the City Council of Vero Beach do hereby proclaim that Friday, December 6th, the official launch of the City of Vero Beach's holiday season and invite the community at large, families and visiting guests, to attend the holiday rec run, 3296 GO, to the Royal Palm Point Holiday Rec Party." Bev, would you like to say a few things?
Give me a mic. I actually came back from New York with a bad cold, so you may be spear the line speech. Maybe you could pass out these goodie bags, Marty and John. You'll find a tee-shirt in there, so if you have the wrong size, just switch it with the person next to you. Thanks for the time this morning. I have to tell you how proud I am to be working on this event after many years of the city and all the departments within the city helping me on Downtown Fridays and Hibiscus Festival and other outdoors events that I said I would never do again. I find myself doing it, but I actually got so many people that I've worked with over the years to be a part of this, and you'll be happy to know that everybody has volunteered their time, their talent. People, entertainment, doing things pro bono because they believe in the city, they believe in the fountains that are our proceeds, and it's been such a pleasure for me to work with this group of people. Only a few are standing behind me. So I'd like to mention their names, and I hate to be redundant, you may have these and other pieces of paper, but I would be wrong not to mention Robert Votar, Marty Paris who's here, Kathy Calery, Alan Drittenbass, Patrick Jordan who's here, Joe McMenamam, John Samatano who's behind me, Sue DiNino who's here, Tammy and Rob Sleazak, Tammy Volk and Rob Sleazak, Jay Kramer, although he won't admit to it, but I had to bake to lure him to the meetings, and he did come, after all. The media and this entire community has been so overwhelmingly supportive, especially Press Journal and Vero Beach News Weekly, WGYL and Jack FM, Vero's Voice and Red Palmer Live, Karen Frankie and Jim Davis, Bob Seuss, Marshall Littlejohn, Mark Schuman, Donna Roberts Mitchell, all of these media who have not waited for my phone call but called me and said, "Come on, Bev, let's get your events promoted." Coming to that, the MCs, who I could never forget, Hamp Elliott, Red Palmer, Jeff and Dana of the Morning Show on Breeze FM. We had major sponsors who came forward and underwrote this entire event, so every penny we bring in, those proceeds are gonna go to the fountains and hoping that they will be able to expand those schedules as the year continues. Allow me to mention their names. Gerard Equipment, Dr. John Michael Saraback Plastic Surgery, and All Aboard Florida, who presented to you one evening at a meeting, and I chased him out the door and got that sponsorship, so that was good. Center State Bank, Wilkie's 14 Bones BBQ, formerly Bonos, Rosway Moore Swan and Organic Solutions LLC, Donadio and Associates, Mr. Mannities and Lobster Shanty, Vero Marine Center, Embroid Me, ABC Printing, and then in-kind sponsorships that include DJ and Dance Productions dot com, Fat Cat Graphics, who is Marty and I artist, who did every piece of collateral, every logo. She was just amazing, and these are thousands of dollars in in-kind sponsorships that we got. JazzFitness.com, which is John Samatano's company, Marks at the Point, Natalie's Orchid Island Juice Company, plus all the city personnel and departments, as well as all the entertainment and civic organizations that have donated time, product, and talent, and you'll find all their names on here. Who did I forget? Oh, the artists, my God. All the artists, and we have... Please present our artists.
You go, David.
I have it.
Absolutely.
And was there another artist here? No. What the artists... We have six artists who have actually done their rendition of the fountain, and they're going to be auctioned off Friday night. Valuable, original paintings, so please come, and all those proceeds will also go to the fountain. So, in the goodie bags, they're gonna be passed out to all our runners. You'll find your tee-shirt if you like to hold them up, and as I said...
And all the sponsors are in the back.
All the sponsors are in the back, thank you.
Great logos.
Great logos, yeah. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna insist that she submit that for an award, so she did a great job. I wish she were here this morning. Marcia DiMaro is her name. So anyways, we're all proud and we're all excited, and we hope everybody will come. We have flyers for you that we'll pass out on the way out, and I think maybe Rob wants to say something?
Yes, I do.
Ah-ha, see, I knew that. Thank you all, I appreciate it, and please come.
Rob Sleazak, Recreation Director. As you can see, you've got a great crowd here, also a number of volunteers, like Bev mentioned, that are not here. Can't say enough thank yous to her, Marty, every single one of these people who are giving their time and their efforts to help us out. We really do appreciate it, and I know it means a lot to us, and it'll mean a lot to a bunch of kids, too.
Absolutely.
You know, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you to all of you.
Gerard.
We'll take a picture, yeah.
We're gonna take over your retirements.
Bev, this is a good thing to take over the entire meeting for. Come on up, please.
Hold on a second. Sue, did you have a check? I think Sue had a check that she wanted to...
Yes, did you have a check or...
Well, I do. I was wondering if this was taking the place of that item.
Yes, would you have to come on up?
Yeah.
Explain what happened with this.
This is Mary Ellen Kozier, and she's the current president of the Vero Beach Art Club, and the art club in collaboration with Spring Hill Suites put on an art show last month, and she's here to present the proceeds to the Recreation Department.
And Rob?
It is my pleasure for the... Oh, in the mic, okay. It is my pleasure to present this money to you because you work so hard for the rec department, and this furthers your cause, and we believe in your cause. There you go, my dear.
Thank you so much. And that was another event that Sue DiNino and Mary Ellen and everybody had put together from the Vero Beach Art Club over at Spring Hill Suites. I can't remember the date, but we had a number of artists who, again, sponsored and helped us out, and we even had children's artists do a bunch of renditions as well. And this money will be put to use, and we know we're gonna use it towards our summer camp, and we can't say enough thank yous to them as well.
I'd like to say that Sue DiNino was the point of all the work, and she deserves the credit.
Do your pictures?
All of you. Not too close. All of them are gonna be set, not too close.
We wanna stay healthy so we can go run. Yeah, Thursday, Friday.
Stand here, hold this up for you.
How about if I just stand over here?
Well, you're the one for Christmas. I just wouldn't picture.
You gotta be in the center, Bev.
Thanks, guys.
It's your Friday.
Well, I have two plaques to give out, and I wanted to preface my comments with a couple of... Many years ago, 1956, I joined the US Army and spent two years in the Army. Actually, Uncle Sam joined me. And I thought at the beginning of my career, I've always been proud of that, and I know Craig is proud of his service in the Army, too. It was a bit arduous, although I ended up a desk soldier, and I thought, well, at the end of my career, I'd give two years, and now four years back, to the city. And I got to tell you, the two years of the four years are much more arduous than the US Army going over hurdles and the rest of it. And I also have to tell you that, you know, it's a tough job. It takes lots of time. It pays virtually nothing. And you have to make decisions. You're not, unfortunately, always right. Some things you'd do over again a different way if you had the chance. And then I found out, and I found out in the last month or so, I guess, almost a month, that being mayor has a whole bunch of additional... And Mrs. Turner laughing because she knew I was gonna find this out the hard way, of additional burdens. And so if you're a vice mayor or mayor, mayor in particular, that there's some problems with that. Craig Fletcher, who I have a plaque for here, and I'm gonna pass it down to, in grateful appreciation of his service as mayor of City of Vero Beach, November 13th, 2012, and November 7th, has been mayor twice, was elected five times. And I'm gonna let Craig comment in a minute. I also have a plaque for Tracy Carroll, and, you know, I think that I will be sure personally that she gets it. She worked very hard to serve us, the public, and to serve City Council. And I think it's important that we realize that these are tough jobs, we can't always be right, and certainly I've been wrong a great many times and will be again. But they're hard jobs, and I think both of these individuals performed very, very well, and I was pleased to serve under them. And so with that, Craig, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned our service in the Army, and one of the privileges of my life was to serve my country. One of my privileges of my life is my family and I to serve the city. And it has been a pleasure most of the time. It has been a distinct privilege to work with such dedicated people. You don't understand how much dedication it takes until you get into this business, and the people that come knocking on your door or calling your phone are standing in the... Let's see, yesterday, I forget who, someone was standing in the foyer here and wanted to talk to one of the council members, and I was the only one here. By default, I got the privilege of... But that's your job. That is what we are here for. If you have something that you have a problem with, come talk to us. Don't fret about it. Come talk to us. Call us. Come in here to the office and see us, make an appointment with us if you want, but we're here to serve you people, and God bless you all for helping us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service. I believe we've done the holiday rec party already? Is that correct? Mrs. Brundage, should you come forward, Florida Power and Light, and she's gonna give us a brief update, I think.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here today, and especially thank you to Councilwoman Graves for inviting me here today to keep the dialogue going and to continue to update you as we move through this slow but sure process. So I appreciate that, and I will... I look forward to continuing to come back and update you as much as possible, whether it's a large update or a small update. So I'm here basically to let you know where things stand now, and then if you have any questions, be happy to try to answer them. Everyone knows, back in August, we provided FMPA with an offer that would allow you to exit your contractual obligations with the FMPA without negatively impacting the FMPA or its members. And also, part of that offer was to provide additional opportunities for FPL and FMPA to work together for the mutual benefit of all, kind of a win-win-win opportunity is the way we viewed that. We did originally request a response from the FMPA in September, as you know that, too, but because it is a very complex transaction in so many ways, and apparently a difficult decision, some of these things for the FMPA, they're continuing at this point to evaluate that proposal that we provided on August 20th. But since September, when our original response was requested, we've been answering a lot of questions. The cities, through the transactional attorneys, have been answering a lot of questions and providing information to them as needed. And I can tell you today that we hope and expect to have a response very, very soon based on all of the information that we've provided. I guess I also really want to assure you publicly, I've told you many times, that FPL wants to complete the sale as soon as possible. That's our goal. You know, we're also committed to bringing lower electric rates to the City of Vero Beach as soon as possible, so as soon as we get that response from FMPA, I'll be back to update you more, and hopefully we'll all have a happy holiday and much to celebrate in the new year.
I was asked to ask you a question, any timeframe on this or at all? For the public, we decided in February to turn over and put Florida Power and Light in conjunction with our lead... our transactional attorneys in lead in negotiating us out of the FMPA, so we're dependent upon Florida Power and Light to tell us where we are and where we're going.
Right, and that's why I continue to be here as often as necessary. As I said, I just can tell you now that based on all the information that we've provided, we expect that response very, very soon. I don't have any crystal ball, but I can tell you that it's based on the latest feedback, that it's gonna be very soon.
Amy, one other follow-up question, and you know I was gonna ask you because I told you in advance, but hope against hope. You know, we all want this to go forward. This is costing us $2 million a month as citizens of the area. If by any chance the arrangement with FMPA didn't go forward, are there other options? And I'm not asking you to comment on what the options are.
That's a very good question. You know, while I stated earlier, you know, we're very confident that the proposal that we did put forth with FMPA is very fair to all parties. You know, yes, we are continuing to evaluate other solutions as we wait, and we are prepared to move forward with other solutions and other alternatives if the current proposal does not work out. And so that is, yes, there are other options. We're evaluating them now, and we'll move forward with them if this proposal does not work out.
And you feel that we'll, one way or another, will conclude this?
I do, and I speak for the company, that we will complete the sale one way or the other.
Other questions from council? Thank you, as always, for your courtesy and your company's hard work and Godspeed, you know, on this thing.
Happy holidays if we don't talk to you before that, but we might. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, public comment, and we have four people on the agenda first. I will again ask that, except for the first four, to try to limit your comments to three minutes in courtesy. And the other thing, direct your comments to all city councils, the whole, rather than any particular individual. My pleasure to introduce Mr. Scott Stradley, who we've asked to report on an interesting development.
Thank you very much, and with your indulgence, I'd like to address my congratulations, Mr. Mayor, to you on your election, and you, Ms. Graves, on mayor, but other than that, we'll address the council. I have two things here to talk about this morning, and I want to do them in the opposite order that they're on the agenda. I think it'd make a little bit more sense because Mr. Gore is following up on... speaking also to this first item on mine, so I'll do that second, and it'll segue a little better. The first, then, thing I want to talk about is our annual report for the Utilities Commission, and you all have received a copy of this, and so I just want to go over the highlights of it. We had nine meetings. We worked very closely with the staff and with the Finance Commission on the issues of the electrical sale, and we worked with the Water Sewer Department on the optimization. We made great progress, I think, in all those areas. We set some goals before you last year at this time, and, you know, we've accomplished those goals. We, again, one of our goals was to monitor the process of the negotiation with the FMPA and use the Utility Commission as an opportunity to give more detailed information to the public and taking it a little bit slower pace because time is so compressed here. We worked with the staff and the city manager and the power plant staff to go over the maintenance. We're making sure that we maintain the plant to industry standards as we go forward and monitoring our capital improvements. And one of our meetings was actually at the plant, and we... during the time of the maintenance of Units 5 and 2, and we got a tour of that and saw that, and happy to report that that maintenance project came in significantly under budget. Again, with Finance Commission, we would have joint meetings when we would bring in the transactional attorney to hold down the costs as we went over the contracts and as they came forward, and again, drilling down into the detail for the public on the contracts, we would have a joint meeting with the Finance Commissions, and I think that worked really well. We had a good working relationship there. And with respect to Water Sewer, we, again, we worked on the optimization as going forward, where we're cutting costs significantly. We spent several meetings, we really drug Rob out over a several-meeting period, looking at a new dewatering process to do biosolids. And it took him, I think, three meetings to get us to finally approve that, to go forward, to be convinced that that was the right thing to do. And we recommended that, and the City Council then went forward with that. So for 2014, our goals are, we want to continue to monitor the issues on the sale on the FMPA, again, keep that information to the public, even more detail than can be given here. And we want to continue to work with staff to make sure that we maintain industry standards of maintenance on the power plant, the facility, so that when we sell it, we have to sell them an operating system. But we don't want to do too much, so we're trying to make that balance. And again, we're gonna... My goal is to work closely, again, with the Finance Commission as things go forward. We've talked several times about the possible alternative site for the substation. We intend to continue to drill down into that, and we want to work on the budgeting process, again, as things go forward. We'll monitor variances and give input into the proposed budget for your council next year. With respect to Water Sewer, one of the goals is, we've really picked up some of the issues of the lagoon, and obviously, everybody's concerned about the lagoon, and our water sewer issue and our septic tanks throughout the city can be having an effect on that, so we're... we want to be looking into that. The... We're gonna continue to work on optimization. There's still a lot to do there at Water Sewer. We're going to make sure, we're gonna monitor the installation and the opera... initial operation, the operation of the new biosolids processing system, which, one of the things that I really liked about that is it's basically very portable, so if we ever get the opportunity to move the water sewer plant off the site where it is now on the river, we can move that new process, that new equipment, over to a new place. You know, we still have the issue with South County and their desires and the rate issues and those things. We're gonna work on that. One of the things that I really would like to see is get a real clear understanding of actual cost versus cost, city versus county, and the differentiate. We bill, we have different type meters, and we bill differently, and so that's really confusing, and I want to get that clarified. I hope to get that clarified as we go forward. And the same basic goals with respect to the budgetary process for Water Sewer going forth next year. So that's the annual report, and any questions about that? Okay, then. The next item, one, we spent, again, several meetings working with Rob Bolton of the Water Sewer. He has this great idea, a great alternative, I think, to move people off of the septic tank, and it's very cost-effective if it goes forward. There's a problem in that the statute, the Florida statute, does not allow this type of hybrid system, and so we're recommending... And I believe he's talked to you all about this? This is... Okay, good.
Mr. Stradley, for the public, why don't you explain what the hybrid system is?
Okay, sure. So I was kind of wondering if I needed to do that as I was going. And Rob, who's here, step up if I get it wrong, which I probably will, need some more detail. The hybrid system allows a pump to take the affluent or the liquids off the top of the septic tank and then pump that and get that into our sewer lines and take it to the plant. And it doesn't then go into the drain field. And it doesn't then go into the drain field, it doesn't go into the drain field, it doesn't leach into the ground, and if it's near the Lagoon, it doesn't leach then into the groundwater. It's, to do this process, from these numbers we've seen, it's about half the price of doing a full conversion for, into the sewer system. When you do this, you don't, you don't get rid of the drain field, so if there's ever an emergency situation, the drain fields would still be there, so they would still work. But by taking the affluent out of the drain field, it makes the tank itself much more efficient in terms of processing the solids. So, it, it's a very intriguing idea, and would like to go forward in looking into it. I'd like to see us go forward, looking into it. However, it's against the law. Because according to the Florida statute-
Small problem.
-you can have a septic system, or you can have a sewer system. And we can't have this hybrid system where we take the affluent, the water, off the top of the tanks. And we think it would need an amendment to the statute to do that. And so, we're recommending, the Utility Commission is recommending that the city council go to the legislative delegation and request the statute be amended to allow a high, this sort of hybrid system.
Just for informational purposes, under D4 of the consent agenda is to have the council respond to this request.
Any other questions?
Good idea.
Okay, great, and thank you very much.
Mr. Gory, Chairman of the Finance Commission.
I want to thank Scott and the Utilities Commission, as he said, there's an enormous amount of synergy, and these issues that have worked are not done in the vacuum, and I think it's just a handoff where we each attend others' meetings, and it has worked very successful. So, thank you, Scott. Hopefully, we'll keep rolling on. I'm not making a annual report at this time, because there are potentially two replacements on the Finance Commission. Therefore, they're, they're appointed, commissioners are appointed on the Finance Commission by each of the council members. So, I wanted to await until the newly constituted Finance Commission in January. We do have and have had an outline of the goals, objectives, and accomplishments, but we have to vote on it as a full council, or a full commission. That being said, Scott did all the heavy lifting on explaining the sewer system. I will make this very brief. We had agreed, working with the Utilities Commission, that after they evaluated it, and we were at those meetings, we had Rob and his team come and explain similarly to finance. And so, here is the, our recommendation. At the October 31 Finance Commission meeting, Mr. Bolton presented an overview of a plan to potentially integrate septic systems into the city's water sewer system, and changed the Florida statute to allow for a combined system. The members passed unanimously this motion to the council. The Finance Commission recommends that the city move forward with the plan to implement septic tank replacement in the city of Vero Beach. Any questions?
Thank you.
So, to take this, yeah, to thank you, the Finance and the Utility Commission, for all your many hours and time given to these issues.
Well, thank you very much. I'm glad I didn't take up so much of your time.
And I think I have one appointment to make, which I will make in December. I believe, Ms. Graves, you have another, which you will probably make in December, is that right? So, you will have a full commission by January 1st.
Yeah, we need all those hours. Thank you very much.
For the public, what happens is, some commissions are appointed by individual council members, and in this particular case, since we had a change in council, we had one vacancy, and we had one resignation. So, the people responsible for replacing those people are Ms. Graves and myself, and we will do that forthwith. We have the interviews going, and so on. The other one currently is planning and zoning, where we each have an appointment. Okay, Mr. Ken Dag, would you come forward? Do you want to talk about the parks? Identify where you live, we all know, and you're a veteran, too.
Morning, Ken.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Council. My name is Ken Dag, 1846 21st Avenue. On your agenda, you're going to be discussing under 9B2, a park issue. So, I wanted to bring to your attention some of the lands, sensitive lands that are not protected. The way it was explained to me, if it's not mentioned in the charter, it's not protected. You heard this morning from a great group of people that are helping our city out with a, with the Rec Commission, putting a lot of time, a lot of hours, a lot of businesses have stepped forward. I'll mention that area over there by the fountain. That area is not mentioned in our charter. Now, with all the help that these people are doing around our city with other sensitive areas, they would be very upset if the city was to lease or sell the properties, because they could lease them to a private entity. That private entity, once it's given up to them, it's theirs to use. They could charge user fees, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, bear that in mind, please, because I have an extensive list. I've also been working on this over a year. This issue was brought up quite a while ago, and I started looking into it to see what exactly was protected and not protected. It even goes back a little further, and I, lots of times, mentioned Jacovi Park and Piece of Pie Park. Those are two pocket parks on the mainland. There's a number of us that worked very hard over the years to put infrastructure in those parks. We worked very hard on the block grant, I had spearheaded that, took a lot of time, a lot of effort, many, many volunteer hours went into making those parks what they are today. When we first started working on them, both those parks were in very, very bad repair. Anyway, that's just two examples. Let me read to you what you have in front of you. As a friendly reminder, city land belongs to the residents who have the right to decide the status and future of that land. The discussion of selling or leasing perceived city surplus lands has caused concern. Anything not specifically named in the charter is not protected. While it is not necessary to open a charter review to protect these properties and lands within the charter, a park and public land referendum leasing these properties will need to be included the next city council election that takes place in November. As a matter of legal housekeeping, I recommend adding the following: Public lands and properties be added to the charter in your charter at Section 5.05. And while the city council discusses Bob Summers Park, a complete list will be provided to the city council after further meetings with city attorney. This list is in the discovery stage. I still have a few more to add, because with that being said, I also checked with our city surveyor, because when you're looking up these properties, you have to look at the deeds, there's quite a bit of work that has to be done. Number one, to make sure the city owns it. Okay? So, there's a lot to this. That's why I'm calling it legal housekeeping. At the end of the day, what we're hoping here, and you're going to hear from other concerned citizens throughout our community, what their concerns are with our public lands, is hopefully to get a decision from you folks today to please direct your staff to do the legal housekeeping and bring back to you the proper paperwork to place this on the ballot. That's what we're hoping for. The following parks and public lands may not be sold, leased, traded, given away, or abandoned. That word "abandoned" is not in the charter at this time, by the city unless such sale, lease, trade, or gift is approved by a vote of the electors of the city of Vero Beach. Let me read off the list. All of Bob Summers Park, including McWilliam Boat Basin Park and Off Leash Dog Area, Van Bush Park, various beach accesses, Cresslon Cemetery. Let me pause there for a second on Cresslon. Many of us that have been part of this community for many, many years, folks that have been born here, generation upon generation, we always thought the cemetery was protected, and the city of Vero Beach would always take care of it. Well, not quite so. A sitting council, if they decide at this time to lease it or sell it, they can. Now, everyone that I've talked to, and it's been many, 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 many people throughout our community, including our county friends, they have many loved ones buried in that cemetery that are laid to rest. They don't want it sold or leased. If you look at other cities that lease out cemeteries, after they make all their monies and whatnot, they leave and the cemeteries fall in very bad repair. If you go to our cemetery, we have a lot of community leaders that helped shape this community that are laid the rest there. And I'm talking about our county friends, our city friends. It's not the right thing to do to lease it or sell it. So, just bear that in mind when you make a decision, it needs to be protected. Let's move on. Block Manor Park, a portion of Charles Park. We found the portion of Charles Park because we were looking at the deeds. There's a piece not protected, it can be sold or leased. Edgewood Two, additional park, a portion of Jacovi Park, Lake Rose, Michael Field, Piece of Pie Park, Pine Terrace Park, Pointe Sierra Park, Royal Palm Point Park, including the fountain, Royal Park, Bethel Creek House, Power Squadron, River House, Leisure Square, Community Center, Heritage Center, Volunteer Ambulance Squad Headquarters. These are just some of the properties, I have a few more to add, that you will get that list. So, when you're doing your discussion today, please consider these properties, please consider putting them into the charter to protect them. They must be named. Your legal team can put together the proper paperwork for you at a later date. If you have any questions when you get to your agenda item, if you would like, I can come back up here and try to answer your questions. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dag. We'll get into this later. Mrs., is that okay with you, mister?
Sure.
Yeah. Mrs. Gould, would you come forward, please? And Ms. Polansky, I'm having trouble with your, how to pronounce your last name. Did I get it right or wrong? Wow.
Okay, good morning. I'm Robin Polansky, 661 Broadway Street in Vero Beach, and I am also the chairman of the Design Committee for Main Street, Vero Beach. And I'm here with Vicki Gould, who is our president of Main Street, and we're here to request that the council approve a $1,000, approval of $1,000 from the city's Tree and Beautification Commission fund to go towards the irrigation on 14th Avenue, and that's, that will really spark our beautification efforts downtown. We need the irrigation so we can get our pots and banners and baskets program getting going.
Vicki Gould, 1901 23rd Avenue. We already went in front of the Tree and Beautification Commission and got their blessing if it was okay with the city council and the city attorney to, for us to get the $1,000 funds. And just to let you know, I passed out a brochure, and Robin, our chairman, has done so much work to have every flower pot adopted by a nursery, as well as our hanging baskets. I mean, you all know, I've watered those things for over a year by myself, and it's just as not sustainable being in Florida. So, this is the last thing we really need, is this irrigation, and that was required by the nurseries to even adopt the pots. So, it's very important, and is the last thing. We've got everything ready to go, so we're hoping that you will be okay with expending these funds.
This comment, I was downtown the other night with Jim, and he was hoping for rain so that the pots that looked so nice didn't die. I would think we'd have general consensus for $1,000. Is there anyone that wants to speak to it?
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
I would just say, having been a volunteer earlier on, when we were actually planting those baskets and hibiscus, and I, you know, just broke my heart to see them, yeah, fail with the weather and with the, yeah, and the irrigating, and I think this is wonderful that we'll have this continual...
Right, and this has been a real community coming together with the nurseries, volunteers. The city has been a huge help. Tree and Beautification Commission, which we've gone in front of several times. I mean, it's been a real joy to work with everybody to see this beautification happen. And I'm going to say, starting in December, you will start seeing some beautiful things happening downtown, and in January, the Arts District, we're working with them to do a banner program, and that is, it's just going to be beautiful. So, thank you all very much.
I think, yeah, for all your work, and look forward to seeing a more beautiful downtown.
So, Jim, I think we've agreed to the $1,000. I would thank you very much for all you have done, both of you.
We will proceed on that. Nanette was helping in the design of that irrigation system, so she knows where we are in that process.
Okay, we're open for general public comment. I see a gentleman on the side. Please come forward, identify yourself and address, please.
Good morning, Mayor, council members, and officials. Thank you very much. My name is Jim Norcong, Jr., 2 Starfish Drive in Vero Beach, Florida, 32960. And to separate myself out from my son, who lives here in town, too, so I don't want him to be embarrassed. I was in the Navy, so it's, I guess it's two or three against one, so I just want to... But I didn't come here to talk about that. Having been in the Navy, though, I retired from the Navy, I fought for many years, and I think you guys probably fought for many years. But first of all, I want to ask anybody here if they know what happened this day in history in 1995. I'll make this quick, I won't quiz you too much, but in 1995, Riverside Cafe was pounding music into my house, and a boom, 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 boom. I want to make sure you get that clear, it's boom, 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 boom. Is that annoying you? Boom. And I asked the city council to resolve that issue in 1995, myself, Glenn Strunk, several other citizens, and I have come here to formally request that you actually take action. Let me see what the Army can do in conjunction with other members here to resolve this issue. It's interfering with my work, I work in the evenings as a radiologist until midnight. It interferes with my wife's sleep, there's not a place in my house that I can sleep at night without the noise coming through. It interferes with my prayer life. It interferes with my social life and my well-being, and it is the case for Mr. Strunk and several other neighbors. So, I request that you take action on this. It's been an 18-year fight. I hope that Mr. Dag, in his one-year fight for the public parks and stuff like that, that he doesn't have to wait 18 years. So, I'm asking you to be appropriate and good stewards to take care of this problem, this home invasion, this public nuisance, the noise into my house and my neighbors' houses. I thank you for that, and I would like you to take this as a formal request, and I'd like to see some action taken on it, and I appreciate your time very much.
Wayne and Jim, do you have any comments? I have no idea what the regulations are on noise and time limits and all those sort of things. None?
Mr. Mayor, we have responded to, through the police department, several calls for this noise complaint. The Riverside Cafe has been cited on numerous occasions. They've also done enclosures to try to... They've also done enclosures to try to mitigate the sound, obviously unsuccessful according to complaints, but they have been cited on a few occasions. I'm not sure legally what, what we could do beyond that.
I'll get to it.
I'm not asking for you to resolve this now. This has been an ongoing thing. There've been commissions put together. There've been reports. There's been a lot of politicizing effort. There's been a lot of effort. I will tell you this. As maybe part of the research program that you could do is to allow me to bring some music equipment nearby the chamber here and run it during the entire next meeting and/or put the music outside each and one, every one of your offices and let it run the whole time that you're here, the half-days that you're here. Or take it to your homes and put it there and just simply leave it there all night long and just see how you feel about it. Maybe you will come to some resolutions. So I'm not asking for an answer now. I just ask you to put it on the agenda and to take action and to resolve it. Thank you very much.
Just a quick question. Are those citations progressive, meaning they get worse and worse as the more infractions occur?
Yet they should.
Yes, they do.
And I'm not familiar with any that have come to the code board because that's the one.
Chief is in the back of the room. Chief, could you come up and talk to me a minute?
I would, I would tell you this. They've been fine, 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 and it doesn't seem to bother them.
That's why we want to make sure they're progressing. It gets worse as it goes.
Thank you.
It should be a step by step, more and more progressively more painful. And I don't believe it is. Chief, have we had any, anyone go over there recently that you know of?
We cited them Saturday evening. We've cited them seven times since 2011, four times this year. It's progressive as far as 50, I believe, then 100, and now we're at the 150 mark.
And that's where it stops?
I believe so, sir.
So we need an ordinance or something to step it up from there. I think we need to make it more painful. We need to make it painful enough that they stop.
We already increased those amounts. I believe the top now is 250 per violation.
I think it's a good topic to bring for another council meeting and to put it on the agenda for discussion, Mr. Mayor.
I would agree. Would you want to do that? Or Mr. Fletcher want to do that? I mean, I.
I'd be glad to put it on my, my issues for next meeting.
That's much appreciated, and I think that'll.
Well, information to discuss.
We'll have the information.
The point is, they're doing, they're doing this, and it's just a cost of business to them. We need to make it painful enough so that it's a cost of business, they'll stop.
Mr. Norcong called me yesterday, and I encouraged him to come here because I clearly was not equipped to deal with it. And I think what you're, what we're proposing here is the right step.
Okay.
Wait, we'll put together a report from the police department on the citations and what has taken place to this point.
Thank you, Chief.
They gladly pay him the next couple of days, so it is pretty much a cost of due business at this point.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
You know, I want to add one other thing. This has been so anemic and so constant, and every, I have not called every time. I've been very selective and been trying to, maybe once a month or once every two months, because I don't want to drag the police officer out at risk to his life just driving across town and getting hit. And so I've experienced this in my life, some employees that have been drawn out. I don't want to have policemen drawn out and put at risk. So this is not a reflection, the number of sightings is not any reflection of the number of times it's been a problem. And Mr. Strunk has just given up on that. He's told me finally. Anyhow, thank you very much. Appreciate you taking it.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Hedy, you're next, I believe.
How you doing, Brian Hedy? And nothing that I'm going to say is to lessen the clear problem that he has, but as far as the public nuisance is concerned, I've been a public nuisance to the city council for a whole lot more years than, than, anyway, I might point that out. But the, I would urge the council, and again, I'm not trying to minimize this problem, but I would urge the council not to do anything to make it painful for any business in this community. Clearly, there's something that needs some resolution, but with the city council to set out on a mission to make anything painful for any city business is not the right approach. Mr. Stradely talked about a hybrid system that is not incorporated into state law. It's also not prohibited by state law. And Mr. Dague spoke properly with respect to the protection of public lands. I might point out that 15 acres of public land that's currently vacant is being sold. It's currently in the public hands. I understand it's the school board, not the city, but it's still 15 acres within the city that's going to be sold. And for a relatively small amount of money, $710,000, $720,000 for 15 vacant acres right in the middle of the city. And I haven't heard a peep from the city council members about this. I might urge that the city council be proactive and instruct the planning department that anything, any development at all that happens on this property be in such a way, done in such a way, that zero water, zero drainage runoff go into the nearby neighborhoods. And the only way they can accomplish that is by a tremendous retainage plan. And before it gets to a point where you, the city council, have no choice at all, if you're proactive with it and instruct your various departments within the city that they're not to bring anything to you that doesn't include a tremendous drainage protection for the residents that are joined. Some city in some county, the Oakmont Park residents that are right there are city residents and the Rockridge are county residents, but we're all, all members of this community, and anything that's done on that property should be, should be done to protect those residents. In fact, the best protection that you could have is leave it, leave it empty. Anyway, in October, I presented a proposition to the city council on how they could give immediate relief to ratepayers and heard nothing. I repeated that in November, and Councilmember Graves, I've given you some backup material. And I'd like some public explanation of why that plan doesn't work, because as you pointed out, it's $2 million a month that could be, could be saved by the ratepayers. And there's no reason why you can't implement that plan unless FPNL doesn't want to. But.
You know, I will comment to that. I talked to Mrs. Brundage, I'm sorry she's not here at this moment, about that this morning, and she wants to go the course we're on. And as I said earlier, we have put Florida Power and Light in conjunction with our transactional attorneys in the lead. And I am very reticent to change any course of action that Florida Power and Light does not believe will get this done sooner rather than later. So I would suggest you talk to Florida Power and Light.
Well, Florida Power and Light is not, is not the one that's representing me. You are. And you remember, in fact, during the campaign, a couple of campaign stops, we talked about some of the things that I had suggested. And you said, you're right, Mr. Hedy. Yep, you said that a long time ago. We should have done that. Should have done that. Well, it's not up to Amy Brundage. It's up to the city council to protect the citizens and the ratepayers. And there is an avenue that is available, that will work, that will start saving the ratepayers the $2 million a month right away. And no one wants to discuss the points of the proposal and, and why it won't work, because it will work and it can work if you've got two willing, a willing seller and a willing buyer. Right now, you have people that just want to spend a whole lot of money on transactional attorneys and, and continue to reap the benefits of the extra money that's coming in every month from the ratepayers. And it's, it's really time to stop the bleeding that the ratepayers are experiencing and to stop the continuation of money to consultants. We, the city residents, are paying for a consultant now from the county. Now, as city residents, we're county residents also, and we need to be concerned about the transactional fees, the lawyers, and the amount of money that we just waste when we have an avenue and we have a way to stop the bleeding now.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hedy. Come forward, please.
Hello, everyone. I'm Mike, 836 Reamr Drive. Just wanted to bring up a few things. I have not heard mentioned at all in the discussion regarding septic tank leaching at this point, any applications for bio remediation. I think that's certainly something the council should look into for the short-term fix. There are many bio remediating products on the market. You simply add it right to the septic tank, and it goes ahead and metabolizes the proteins and solids and grease and all kinds of other things that are put down in there that are leaching. It's used all over the country and all over the world right now to remediate many, many different problems, such as cyanobacteria blooms in freshwater bodies and saltwater bodies. So that could be a really cost-effective, short-term way for the city to simply suggest that our residents who are on septic system start incorporating these products into their regimen instead of just putting, you know, Riddex down the system. You know, these are things that do show scientific results for contamination in nearby ponds and things around the country. So I would suggest you look into that. Be happy to email the council any more information on that.
Yes, by all means do that. Mr. Turner, do you have any comment on that at all?
I was certainly interested, yeah, getting some more information on the product.
I mean, this is not, you know, this is widely used across the world, so it's kind of odd that it hasn't been brought up in discussion yet rather than trying to replumb everything.
Well, it's something, yeah, for public education, I think, is a key.
Sure, sure, of course. And my home is one of the ones that has been on septic. The city did not put in sewer a long time ago there on Reamr Drive. So, you know, we're part of the problem, part of the solution, hopefully. And I'd just like to comment on a few other things. One, as far as the dog park goes, you know, I'm certainly in favor of holding that asset within the city charter and making sure that the name McWilliam Park stay on that. It should be McWilliam Dog Park. That land was donated by the McWilliam family, and it should stay in their name. And then lastly, I'd just like to say, as a member, a youthful member of this community, you know, I occasionally frequent Riverside Cafe and do enjoy it. And we have so few places for the young people to go to. I'd encourage everyone to just, you know, try and work with Riverside Cafe to figure out a solution about the noise, because, you know, I have construction going on next door to my house right now. And yes, it's annoying, but I understand that it's not a permanent thing. So, you know, we can figure out ways to work with Riverside and, and make sure that they stay in business. They pay a lot of taxes, and I'm sure most all of you have been there more than one time. In fact, I just noticed City of Vero Beach 90th anniversary, you have it as one of the landmarks. So, you know, keep in mind, this past weekend, this past weekend was one of the busiest weekends of the year. There was a lot of music and a lot of concerts and a lot of east wind. So it's not that bad every night, and it's usually only on the weekends. Thank you, guys.
You know, we should recruit you for city government. That's one of my missions, whether a commission or ultimately run. No, I'm, I'm serious, actually. One of the things we need to do is have spokesmen of that generation, more of them here and on our commissions than we have some of us that are a little gray. Mr. Boucher, and you're not.
No, no. As a matter of fact, I'm going to comment on that. Mark Mutcher, 617 Indian Lye Lock Road, and I'm also one of the youthful members of the community. I like to say that Vero Beach is a nice place for old people and their parents. So, in any case, I wanted to call your attention to the difference between the Utilities Commission recommendation on the septic situation and the Finance Departments. The Utilities limited their recommendations to trying to get this law modified so that you could look into it. The Finance, if I understand correctly, said they recommended that you should fully implement it. Well, I don't know that any cost studies have been done on this. They say it's half the price. By means of full disclosure, I have two septic tanks. I think they're both on sewer. And the, there's the cost of getting the liquid out of the tank and onto the street, but we, but the streets don't have sewer. So you would, it's my understanding that you would still have to fully sewer all the neighborhoods. So, I mean, that doesn't make any sense to me, and I'd just like to call that to everybody's attention.
I was going to say, the application of that system, I think, is limited, but there are areas where I think it, yeah, it could be a viable solution, but, you know.
Well, the way I heard, the way I heard it, it was across the board.
I'll comment on that a little bit, because I've just been following it. I don't really know a great deal about it. But the idea would be, if you have a typical gravity sewer, you've got to dig up the street. And you're talking, I don't know, maybe $15,000 per home by the time you dig up the street and connect. The idea with this is you directionally bore, seems kind of miraculous, but directionally bore a two-inch pipe under the street, you wouldn't have to tear up the street. And the idea would be that it would take the effluent off instead of the drain field. By the way, drain fields regenerate, so when you had a power outage, the drain field would be healthier than it otherwise would be. And what would happen is, by doing that, it would cut the costs in half. And Rob, you're in here. Did I get it right, wrong, or indifferent? He said I got it right. So the idea would be that it would cut the costs in half. But then, I've been active in lobbying with, to the Florida League of Cities to lobby, and we'll be talking about some of that in this chamber later on in the week with the legislative delegation. But one of the things that the Florida League of Cities is recommending is that cities across Florida need help with this entire septic problem. I mean, there are like 38,000 septic tanks in Indian River County. There are 1,500 in the city. So the problem you get financially, you can say it doesn't cost 15, it costs 7,500, but where does the $7,500 come from? So I think it's a step, it's a plausible thing to minimize the costs, and really, the cost is the real problem. Any city in the state of Florida, all 410, in any of the 63 or 7 counties, have the ability to mandate that somebody go on a gravity sewer if they're in an area where it's appropriate. In other words, an urban area. But what you get involved in is the cost of it is a tremendous problem, a tremendous, tremendous problem. So something that cuts it in half is a good idea, as Mr. Stradely accurately points out. But does it solve the problem? No, it doesn't.
Well, I've watched the presentation, and this is the first time I'm hearing that the way you're describing it, it cuts the costs in half, but then if you ever go to full sewer, then you've got 100% of the cost. So you're paying 150% of the cost to do this on a, on a stage basis.
You'd never go to a full sewer. You'd bore.
Then you have septic tanks forever. They may or may not have bottoms in them.
And the city would, the city would. The city would come, it's called a step system because you'd have, every house would, I live in, in a, in a community that has a lift pump, a step pump, if you like. Every house would have to have a step pump. And the city would mandate that they all be the same so they can be maintained. But that pump then takes electricity to run, and it takes maintenance for the pump. So, you know, a gravity system is ideal because it lasts forever. I mean, in Paris, they have pipes from before the French Revolution that are still there. So it's, it's a difficult thing. We don't have a solution.
Like I say, I just wanted to point out that the Finance Commission, without any figures, is recommending you go full speed ahead on this thing. I don't think that's correct. Thank you.
Rob, do you have any more comment? I mean, I, I think it's important. In the years ahead, this is going to be an important issue, and we don't know how to resolve it.
Mayor, City Council, Rob Bolden. As far as the pump, and let me give a step back and kind of give a quick overview. What's being proposed is that the existing subdivisions that have septic systems, those septic systems would remain in place, and simply a pump chamber would be installed to intercept the fluid that normally goes into the drain field and pump that through the two-inch mains that we talked about being installed in neighborhoods to the wastewater plant. There would be no further sewer-ing from there. So you would have a septic tank or some type of a tank system with a pump on your property. Now, it would be optional. Now, it would be optional in the future if a resident decided that the drain field was in the way of a pool, or it was in the way of a new garage or an addition on the home, that there's ways that we can work around eliminating the drain field, maybe by putting in another holding tank or by having backup generation on the house to where the pump would always work. So there's alternatives to designs to help people with doing things with their property. But there wouldn't be, this would be the sewer-ing of the neighborhoods by putting this type of system in. You wouldn't have a gravity sewer system. Gravity sewer systems, they're the best one out there. I mean, for a brand-new subdivision coming in, we would still want them to go on a gravity sewer system. When you look at the maintenance over a 75-year period, a gravity sewer system and this pump-type system, they're about equal. You know, when you look at the monthly cost, it comes out to within less than a dollar per month difference in the two systems. Yes, there is more repetitive things that has to be done with the pump station versus the gravity system, but when the gravity system needs to be slip-lined or anything like that, it's usually a higher-dollar, one-time event. So I looked at it, you know, both systems, and they're comparable. So.
Rob, the, this system wouldn't alleviate the pumping of the tank every three to five years, right? You still have to pump the tank with solids.
You would still have to pump the tank of solids, but instead of three to five, you're pushing out to like five to eight, seven to nine, in those range, depending on the size of the tank itself. And one of the reasons that you have a maintenance of three to five is you're worried about that drain field clogging by every day, something going in it. You don't have that worry anymore because now you have a pump sending it to a wastewater plant. So therefore, you can.
My point is, you're still going to have to pump the tank.
And the city will pay for that. In other words, that'll be part of this program. The city takes on full responsibility for that pump, and the pump, the lines, everything else, and the pumping of the tank. It'll be put on a schedule. The only thing the homeowner would have to pay is the electric for the pump, which is roughly about $4 a year of a cost.
I think we maybe spent more time at a general city council meeting we should in this, but I think it's valuable because it's educational. And the years ahead, I think, Mr. [inaudible], you and I both think that we're going to have to think about this. So, you have any further comment you know more about than I do?
No, I think we just still need to continue exploring options at how we could make our septic tanks, our existing septic tanks, safer for our lagoon.
And the language that's being proposed is very general, so that this design that I've looked at, there could be other designs, and hopefully there will be. But this opens the door for those individuals that want to leave some of the facilities in place, especially the drain field. What drives this is, if you leave the drain field on the property, it has to be permitted through Department of Health. And therefore, we need a change to allow that. But, you know, that was for, it was to pave the way for other cities to come up with better ideas, hopefully.
Just a real quick question. Being that you would have more material coming back, would that allow you to expand the reuse water program to other residences?
You would have, yeah, but remember, there's three sewer customers produce enough water for one reuse customer, so that is limited.
But the possibility of expanding it does exist.
Possibility is there. I'm sorry, it's four to one, not three to one.
Okay, further public comment. Who would like to come forward? Come forward, sir.
My name is Joseph Gafanti, and I pay taxes to the city of Vero Beach. At the beginning of the meeting, I heard something about three minutes, and that we were being restricted to those three minutes, which apparently didn't occur. But I'm a little bit concerned about that, waiving it on the people that sign up and those who don't sign up. You're putting an impediment upon the people who don't have the time to come down here or whoever they sign up. And I find that an abridgement of the rights of those people who don't have the time to seek a redress of a grievance from their government. As far as the septic is concerned, I came to talk about the parking meters, but as far as the septic, I tried to get ahold of Dr. LaPointe, who, excuse me, who's doing some research, and his cellphone doesn't take messages, so I was unable to contact him. I think before you go riding off on a horse with a lance at a windmill to find out to what extent the septic systems pollute the Indian River Lagoon, and before you know that, I wouldn't do anything. And the guy, this doctor, excuse me, the doctor, is doing research on that, and I don't know where it's going, to what, the state of his research. I did talk to him one time, months and months ago, and he told me, I talked to him over the telephone, he told me that his research at that time was inconclusive. The river is polluted with human waste, there's no question about that, but to where it's coming from is the question. The reason why I came here this morning is to talk about the meters and the idea of putting parking meters on the beach. And I grew up in New Jersey, and down the shore, they have parking meters. And one of the reasons that, one of the nice features that I found about Vero Beach 35 years or so when I came here was that, it was a minor issue, but I was aware that there were no parking meters. I think it's a totally insane, asinine, if not insane, notion that you would consider, or anyone in this community who knows anything about Vero Beach at all, would consider putting parking meters on the beach. It's a personal affront to the people who use the beach, not including me because I walk or ride the bicycle there almost on a diurnal basis. But to consider such a moronic idea is deplorable. And to put it off until March, when it should have been put off forever and just totally abandoned. The idea that you have to lower yourselves to gain some financial advantage is sickening. And that's pretty much all I had to say. But I will say this, the first time I was here since a new council was, took place, is that I have to remind and inform you, remind some of you and reform, inform somebody, that any comment I make about you is strictly on a professional level or lack thereof of your behavior as politicians. It most certainly has nothing to do with your personal affairs. So as I like to say, I really, your personal lives don't mean anything more to me than the man or the woman, as the case may very well be in the moon. So any time that you attack me or to accuse me of making personal comments, I'm going to construe that as an impediment to my right to petition you for a redress of a grievance. Good day.
Thank you for your comments. We're going to take a break, but I would like to finish public comment. So anyone, come forward. Okay, come forward, sir.
My name is Ray Knell. I live at 450 Date Palm Road. And by the way, we had to speak for the Air Force. We entered about the same time. I managed the vast 26 years, so, and it was a great, great, great opportunity for me.
Thank you.
I want to speak on behalf of the city-owned property that's where the baseball park is, Bob Summers, and observe that that is the last remaining waterfront that we have on the river. And it's been my observation that the Vero Beach, for some odd reason, has always turned its back on the river. If you look at the way it's been developed and how we've responded to it, with the exception of that wonderful fountain, we tend to ignore it from a use point of view, not that we don't love the river. Take a look at, for example, Sebastian Riverwalk, Stewart, their Riverwalk, it's a lovely facility, even Fort Pierce, and how the city and private enterprises have come together to create a very effective and useful environment for all the population. So before we put that property specifically into some kind of reserve that would tie your hands so that you can do nothing more with it than grow grass, I would ask you to give us some deep consideration. My thought would be that we would do something similar to what we did with the Vision Plan. That lasted a long time, and I'm not suggesting this lasts as long as that. But to examine all of our waterfront, our riverfront, if you will, and make sure that it's all used to its highest and best use. So I'd encourage you, especially on this property, to look in that perspective. And regarding the dog park, I don't deny the need perhaps for a dog park, but Vero Beach owns 158 properties. The county owns 633, many of them have buildings on them, a lot of them don't. Total acreage for all of that is somewhere in the area of 9,200 acres. It seems to me we could find a suitable place that's convenient for people but not take up such a valuable resource as we have there on the river. It's a wonderful place to go, and I would hate to see it limited to that kind of purpose. And just as an exercise this morning, I did a little research, and I thought you might find this interesting. Don't laugh at me, and my wife said I shouldn't do this, but I'm just going to do it, and I won't take too much time. The average dog generates 10 to 20 milliliters of urine per pound per day. A dog expels three to five times a day. Assume a 20-pound dog, 15 milliliters times, so at 20 pounds, is 300 milliliters of urine per day. Assume we have 50 dogs at that facility daily, and that would mean if they, let's say, one out of three times of their daily activity is done there, that would then result in 3,750 milliliters per day deposited on that property. If we take that and extend that out for 365 days, that's over a million milliliters of liquid, or 362 gallons yearly, forever, deposited within 25 feet of the river, plus the other things that don't always get picked up. So that's just a thought. Oh, and one other thing, I was a lifeguard here years ago. When we kept the dogs off the public beach, it wasn't about the turtles, because we didn't worry about the turtles back then, it was about public health. And I still believe I think that's the case, so that's a thought. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Come forward, sir.
Hi, Christian Chula, 586 Zalea Lane. My purpose for being here is to address McWilliams, to add it to the charter, and that it's a space and it's a park. It's not just a dog park. It's what you ultimately want as a council and as a city is people coming to your parks. That park happens to have people come there daily. I mean, some of the other parks, you see Riverside, you see people there on the weekends. You come to McWilliams Park, you see people there every day of the week, of all ages. I mean, you're encouraging, I'm 32, Lang is, what, 29? So, 28. So we have a variety of ages of people there. I mean, Miss Graves now in the city, it's showing the different dynamic of the city like it used to be. So that brings out a lot of that. I have friends from that park that are 20 years old, all the way up into their 80s. I mean, I've met the best people I know at McWilliams Park, and it just happens to be I met them with my dog. I believe that's what the city wants the most, is people coming into the city, coming maybe to go to McWilliams Park, and stopping by businesses while they're in the city. I mean, bringing revenue to the city. Ultimately, I think that that space needs to be reserved for the people of Vero Beach. We can address specific areas of that park later, which we want to designate to something else. But I think the most important part is to get it on the charter because that property is very important to the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any further comments?
Brendan Burke, 516 Conway. I just would like to, once again, stand, show my support for the dog park. There's many uses that, kids were playing T-ball over there the other day. It's not just a place where grass grows. It's more important to a lot more people than, I think, and it's probably the highest-used park we have in this community. And so I hope you guys make the right decision and try and keep this thing solidly in our hands.
Thanks for your comment.
Thank you.
I don't see any further comments, so what we're going to do is I'll close public hearing. Are you, would you want to make public comment?
Yes, I'd like to.
Come forward, then.
My name is Jess. I live on Bethel Creek Drive here in town. I was not prepared to come and talk to you about it. I wasn't prepared to listen to what you people were going to do about the dog park. I can only say this, in various other states, including California, and especially where I lived most of my life, in Los Angeles, we had magnificent parks, magnificent parks for dogs and people. They were beautiful. Mercer Island, where I lived, people would come from everywhere to remark about how wonderful it was to have a dog park. When I came here, I didn't know that Vero Beach had a very bad reputation as regards dogs. They were not welcome. There was no place to take them. It is incredible to me that a park so close to the ocean, where people want to come in the wintertime from up north, won't be able to bring their dogs. True that people have to be educated that they pick up the refuge, but a dog, to me, is as important as the gentleman who brought in about how much urine goes. I hate to think of what men do in other places. And I've seen that all my life in Los Angeles and everywhere. They have no qualms about what they want to do when they need to do it. So I will only say this, without that dog park, I would very seriously consider leaving Vero Beach after 13 years here. I didn't even know that I could bring a dog to that dog park because there was always a sign that said, "Before 8:00 a.m. in the morning," and something or other at night, I don't know. And I didn't bring my dog there, those dogs that I had at that time. This dog that I have here now, if I cannot take him every single day to that darned dog park, my life is ruined. I can't do anything. He won't, I mean, from 4 o'clock on, he says, "Take me, take me, take me." He is a poodle, a Labrador poodle, and I'm working very hard to keep him off out of the water. But he runs, he plays, he has nobody else to play with to chew on a bone or whatever. And so it's important that people know that we here in Vero value our animals more than how much urine may be dispelled. I beg your pardon. But in all seriousness, it's important to have a good reputation. People in their boats come here from Connecticut and elsewhere with their dogs. Some of the dogs live on those boats, and the people take them off the boats every day and bring them into the park to play. A family is important. My dogs are important to me as other people's children are. And I ask you to seriously think that Vero Beach welcomes animals as well as people. Thank you so much for listening to me.
I had the pleasure of meeting your dog. We're going to take a break till 10 minutes after, is that okay?
Good.